Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, February 3rd School Committee Meeting. Let's call the meeting to order. It is 6:30, 4:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This evening, we have Michaela Noonan with us. Welcome, Michaela. Addie Dion is on the school field trip to the Woods Hole for the science, the big science field trip, so we're excited to hear all about that, and so welcome, Michaela. Okay, my correspondence is... Oh, Zoe.
What?
Did I call you Michaela?
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Michaela. Anyone in the audience wish to make a public statement? Okay, seeing that, we're going to move on to Chairperson's report this evening is, I would like to happily report that on December 19th, the School Committee met via Zoom, and we voted unanimously in favor of ratifying the contracts for all units, and we are very happy with the way everything went, and so the, I asked the BEA to help us create a joint statement, so I'd like to read the joint statement right now, and just again, say thank you so much. So, this is our statement. The BORN School Committee and the BORN Educators Association are pleased to announce that we have reached a comprehensive agreement on all three contracts for teachers, ESPs, and administrative assistants. Both parties came to the table with intent to hear each other's points of view and have open, honest conversations about what will be best for the BEA members and the students of BORN Public Schools. These agreements continue to strengthen our school community, and we are grateful for the work and collaboration of the School Committee members and all of the BEA members who contributed to the process. Our students deserve the best education possible. These new contracts show the mutual respect and dedication of our employees, administrators, and School Committee members. And it was just such a great, I thought it was a great experience all around, and record-breaking time, I believe eight weeks total to get all of the units completed and ratified, and so that's just a big thank you to everyone who was involved. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, can we take the vote on that right now, actually? Okay, so we do, even though we did vote in a, in a executive session amongst just our School Committee, we do need a vote in public session, so we are going to take a vote. So, we need a vote to approve the, actually, we need to approve each contract independently. So, we would need a motion to approve the contract for teachers.
Each?
Yeah, we're going to do each one. So, do we have any on the vote?
Motion to approve teacher's contract as written.
A second.
Okay, so we'll call vote to approve teacher's contract. Carrie?
Yes.
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 Okay, teachers' contracts are approved. We need a vote for administrative assistance.
A second.
Real.
Oh.
Motion?
Oh. You can read it.
I moved to approve the contracts for the administrative assistance.
Executive. Okay. I second that. We'll call vote. Carrie?
Yes.
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 And we need one for the ESPs.
Make up motion to approve the AFSCME Council Number 93 Local 30 contract.
A second. Okay, we'll call vote to approve AFSCME Council 93 Local 30, which is the custodial unit.
Yes.
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 And we need, we still need one more to approve the...
ESP.
Yes, the education, educational support personnel.
So, motion to approve for ESPs.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. All contracts are approved. Thank you very much. Not completely by us, sorry. But we got there. We got there, yeah. All right. Moving right along. Oh, and thank you also to Anne Marie and Theresa who came tonight to show their support to us and for us to show our support to them, so I appreciate you guys coming. We all appreciate you coming here tonight. That's all we have. Student spotlight. Okay, our student spotlight, this month, come on up.
All right. So, I'm Michaela. If you don't know me, it's nice to meet you all. This is Lola. And this is Penny, who's in 7th grade, and we brought her up because she was one of the leads in the play, so we'll give her a little chance to speak after the presentation. But I'm going to start, so we started with, we decided to showcase Frozen Junior. That was the musical about the middle school play on, the most recent one, and it had a lot of success, and we, it was really talked about even amongst, you know, us high schoolers and all of the staff, and we all knew about it, and we knew that it went really amazingly, so that was kind of immediately what we went to, to focus on. Some of our productions, they were on January 10th, 11th, and 12th, right in the middle of last month. And then, so just a little bit of an overview, it was made up of the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. Most of the leads were in 8th grade, and a lot of them had prior experience. They had done the play Wonka earlier in the year, which had also gone really well. And so, we, we, we went to the middle school, and we got to meet with a group of the cast members a week or two ago and just get to kind of hear about their experience and what it was like for them. They learned a lot of the ensemble, so the groups and a lot of like more choir-based elements were made up of a lot of the young kids. We also heard of a great success with Friday and Sunday shows being completely sold out, and only eight seats left on Saturday, and they were all sporadic seats. And there was also a lot of former high school students, former theater kids who helped out, which was awesome to get to hear about and see them all involved. Kristin Nie, Aspen, Jack, there was a lot of really awesome people who got to help with that. And then, so preparation, obviously, months and months leading up to the play, which we learned were fun but intense, and it was actually cool for me because I ran cross-country, and our room that we used to meet in for, for our practices, we would meet in before we would go run, was the same room that they used for rehearsal, so we ended up getting kicked out, like halfway through the season, so we would just be sitting in the hallway outside while we like heard all of the chaos going on. Didn't really know what it was for, so it was really fun to get to talk to them all about it and realize, oh, this is what I was kicked out for. And, yeah, they started out light, but obviously, as it got closer, more intense. We've got like Tech Week, which is the week like just before the play, which is always the most chaotic, which I remember from being in middle school, I did crew, Tech Crew, and I remember it was insane, it was a blast. Another really interesting element was I just saw that I was pregnant during this, which definitely added a little bit of complication to everything, just like trying to make it go smoothly, but what we heard like from the members of the cast is that it kind of forced them to go smoother through all of it, which was almost a gift because there was a lot less drama and it all just like, everybody wanted peace, which happened, and that was great. Choreography was insane. There was a lot of kids who like danced and did gymnastics like as their sport outside, which really just like elevated the play because people were, it was what they were used to doing. Backstage, there was a lot of parents and teachers that helped. Almost all of the sets were made entirely by parents. I'm sure most of you know Karen Russell. She did all of the trolls costumes, which were super individualized, like lots of different patchwork and materials, and I think that was really fun for the cast to get to kind of stand out in their own way. Parents also decorated the lobby right out there for the night of, which was such a gift, and I talked to Mr. Reynolds, and he talked about doing it too, and he had a lot of fun with that. Or often Sven costumes. Those were puppets, so they were quite, we learned, Penny can talk all about that, but they were quite an instrument to manipulate, but proved to be quite a bit of fun. Kids also got to meet the cast outside with the puppets dressed up. It was a lot of fun for everybody. Kristin took care of a lot of the hair and makeup, and we got to hear some fun stories about some hair teasing, some full faces painted, and it just sounds like it was a lot of fun, and that they really like brought it up to new levels with that. Lola, would you like to continue?
So, obviously, the biggest part of theater is the family because the bonds that you make being a part of that is just like incredible. Everyone grew so close through the show, like spending hours on hours together, like just, I know, like I did it last year, I'm still friends with so many people that I never thought I'd be friends with because it's just like, you're just together so much. It's like impossible not to be friends. Especially like through grades, I know like the people from the high school who came down, like I never even knew they existed until the play, and when they were like helping me with makeup and stuff, that was so much fun, so like a lot of grade mixing school because then you got friends all over the place. And backstage, that's another whole story. It's just grades back there hyping up everybody, so much fun, like just the support that you get on the stage, it was obviously a big part for everybody. They loved it. Impact, so Mr. Reynolds, 7th grade teacher, he went, he said that the kids were super pumped up from the first auditions up until the end of the last show, which is very true. I agree with that. The audience is really pumped up, which got the cast excited. The audience is always the best part, especially for shows like this where it's like everybody knows it, and it's just like a very fun show. Kids from the audience got to take pictures with the cast members and loved it. Obviously, like Elsa, who wouldn't want to take a picture with her? Anna. And then the character boxes, which are also a huge thing. Any character who's taken can make a little box for themselves, and this year they raised it's like $1,500. Yeah, $1,500 for the drama program, which is really good, so hopefully next year will be great.
Yeah. And then these are pictures. Some candid, some behind the scenes.
I take credit for the...
Yep, some of those came from Penny. Thank you, Penny. Yeah, so that's our presentation, and we've got Penny here to add any, any more thoughts. You guys are welcome to ask any questions.
The show is fantastic.
It was.
And I think the best part was all the, all the little kids that went to watch were all dressed up.
Yeah.
All in costumes, frozen costumes, it was so cute. They must have just been like in their glory to see, to see you guys come out and talk to them afterwards, and that's so special.
Yeah, I had a bunch of little kids like come up to me and like they're on addresses and like take pictures and stuff.
Well, you guys probably were like Broadway to them, you know? That's awesome.
They're like Broadway.
What was that?
I said, "They're like Broadway."
Period. Yes, yeah, yeah. Oh, that's great, you guys. Great job. Thank you so much. Thank you. Great job. Okay. All right, superintendent's report.
Oh, the boring stuff. You have to go after them. I like to say too, before they leave, I just love hearing from students. Your poise is so amazing. I love that you went and spoke to the other students to find this out, like thank you for this, this was a gift.
Thank you, guys. It was a blast to do, like talking to all of the, unfortunately, we couldn't have a ton of the middle schoolers come up. They're busy, they have their lives. It was so fun. No, guys, this is amazing, but it was really fun to get to talk to them all, like we heard so many stories, and there was a lot of like just laughter and listening, so it was a gift for us too.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, so in your folders and hyperlink, there's a personnel report that I know you love to see twice a year, so it tells us kind of all the people, I counted it up, I believe since the beginning of the school year, we've hired like almost 50 people. It's just so many, yeah. It's about a small little place, but people are coming and going, and it also lists our retirements. Again, we're sad to see folks leave, but we also wish them well, so that's there for you to see. The next thing is the budget preview, and I know that's what everyone's very excited about, so we'll kind of roll right into that if you wouldn't mind, and then we'll take some things out of order so that our principals don't have to stay so late, so. All right, let's go into slideshow. So, I kept, I kept the graphics really similar to years past, I think it's easier to remember. Oh, yeah, I remember talking about this last year, but they are, the slides are customized to this year. So, this slide has a lot on it. It's our assumptions, and so if you remember, the assumptions are things that we think will happen. They're guestimates, they're educated guestimates about, you know, where we want, where we think this budget will fall. We've, knock on wood, we've done pretty well, and we've come within budget every single year, but they are still guestimates based on this. So, our current enrollment as of last week was 1532, and 118 of those are school choice because you ask about that every year, so that is an increase from the year before. That's always a good thing because that does mean dollars coming back into our, our offsets that we can use to offset the budget. The governor's budget, which if you recall, and so this is for our newbies at the table, the governor's budget is kind of the first draft of what will hopefully become the budget that gets at the state level locked in hopefully by July, and so the governor's budget, there's an analysis link here that you can see, I'll go over real quick, but this is from MASSS, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and this is the broad like on a, on a state level, all the things that were seen in the budget. Let you read that at your leisure. And then, the cherry sheet, I don't know why, maybe it used to be pink colored, or maybe because it comes out in the spring, is on the website for Division of Local Services, DLS. You just have to go down to find BORN. There we go. And this again will reflect last year's estimate, so here, Chapter 70 is the money that goes from the state to the town for education, and so you can see in this year's budget what the governor put in already, it's more money in Chapter 70 than BORN received last year. It also has all different other aspects, including charter tuition reimbursement, so those are BORN residents going to charter schools, so that reimbursement is also higher. The school choice receiving tuition, again, this is the estimate, so you can see our school choice will be slightly higher this year, and then other things that are received at the town level. Just to quickly look, the other ones, so that's the money coming in to the town, and then the other tab is the money that they need to pay out based on the estimates. So, the school-related ones include, let's see, they're together, school choice sending tuition, so these are BORN resident students who have choiced somewhere else, and so you can see the numbers are pretty similar from, from last year to what's anticipated this year, and then charter school sending is a little bit higher, but again, there's more in the reimbursement, so that just kind of gives you the, the basic version of what you'll see there. Come on back to the budget preview. The other one is that there's currently advocacy, SOA stands for Student Opportunity Act, and I believe we're in year five of a seven-year rollout. If you recall, in the first few years, the urban districts got a lot of money because again, it was felt at the state level that there was a higher need, and it's supposed to be by year seven that districts like us will be finally getting our fair share, so that SOA should continue to go up, which will help a lot, but we were guaranteed $30 per student through the SOA, and already the governor's budget has $75 per student. That's why you see that increase. Last year, and so it goes from the governor, then, you know, to the House, then to the Senate, then to the committee that decides it, and you know, it, it takes a little while, but our hope is that this advocacy will bring that number up even more from 75 even higher. I believe last year it was 104 per student, so that was a good thing. There's also currently advocacy for what's called a supplemental budget, which means that hopefully everyone will agree that the schools need X amount of dollars more, and this supplemental budget has to do with special ed out-of-district tuitions and circuit breaker. So, my hope is that will still come in, because then that would be coming to us on top of what's received in other places, but it's just, we don't know until it's all said and done and it gets signed into, into law. Negotiated CBAs, you heard the really good news. We've, we've known this good news for a little bit, but to say it officially is really wonderful, so this budget does have all of the units, all four, and I do want to also thank ASME, which is our custodial unit, because we had to negotiate all four this year. They were also fantastic, so hats off to them, and all of the steps have all been calculated in at this point. We sometimes get some surprises, again, if we're hiring new hires and they're at a different step or placement than the person they're replacing, but as of right now, it's our best guestimate, they're all in this budget. So, what we usually talk about with budget is either level-serviced or level-funded or neither. Level-funded means you have the exact same amount of money as the year before. Level-service means you have the exact same amount of service as before. We're somewhat level-service, and so you'll see that, that we don't, we're proposing reductions in staff to what we consider to be rightsizing, so we still feel students are getting the same service. There's no other way to say it than somewhat level-serviced. So, all right, so we have unknowns, there's always unknowns. We don't know what the state budget will do. Our offset amount availability is a little more in question this year than in other years, and so with our offsets, that means we know we need this amount of money, and we have several categories, think of them like checking accounts, even though that's a very simplistic term, and that school choice, because again, we get that in and then we can use that to balance next year's budget. Circuit breaker, which is for special ed out-of-district tuitions, and that's always a year behind, so again, the kiddos that we have in the current budget, we are collecting money from like a year or two before, so it's a revolving account, that's why I'm doing this with my hands, and military mitigation, because we service so many military students through Joint Base KICOD, we get a special earmarked offset through the, through the state. Those are all, we never know from year to year what those are going to be like, so we give a good guestimate, we try to keep healthy reserves, but we are putting offsets against this budget in the hopes that it will all work out. We also don't know about additional grants, which as you know, every single meeting, we seem to be coming to you and saying, "By the way, we just got $50,000 for this," or "We just got this," so we have an amazing team of folks who bring in extra money all the time, which is wonderful, but they're yearly, you know, they're, they're not to be pounded on. Possible loss of federal funding, so as of right now, again, nothing is in stone, but based on when the federal legislature left prior to this session, they were proposing a budget that had a Title I cut of 25%. So, again, we know what we get for Title I, and that's across the board, the whole, the whole country. They also, there were some proposals that also showed cuts to Title III, I think Title II-A. So, we just don't know. We, we assume that we'd get the same thing as last year or very similar, but we just don't know at this point, so we're being conservative with our, with what we think. And then unanticipated expenses, so as you know, last month, we asked you to approve Special Ed Reserve Fund transfer, and then Board of Select approved it because that was completely unanticipated in this budget, so thankfully, that's come to us, we're able to balance, and we're doing great. This is just a reminder and hyperlinks for anyone who doesn't know where to find any of these. Our budgeting is always aligned with our current district strategy, school improvement plans, and our professional development handbook plan, so we're always, you know, trying to put our dollars where our plans are because we know that's what's going to move the needle for kids, and as we do our new strategic plan going forward, the next five years, you'll see those line up as well. All right, so the, the next two slides are the what? These are the two that, you know, I'll slow down a little bit because a lot of that was just refresher. I call this one, you know, all the great things that we're able to do even with not that much money. So, we do have staffing, reallocation, and rescheduling, and we're able to continue student support through intervention, through enrichment, through co-teaching models, so again, everything in our district strategy, we're able to continue, and I really want to, you know, take my hat off to the principals and especially the team that's been working at the middle school to really take another look at scheduling to be able to get, to give us a level service for what kids need. So, we still have win walks, we still have, you know, data teams, we still have the ability to have interventionists, because I thought that would be something we might lose in this budget, because we still have pandemic loss, you know, our, every, every group of kids, every grade level is their own, I call it pandemic profile. They all went through it at a different place, they all are missing, maybe you say missing something, but also they probably gained something in resilience and independence and, you know, so we won't know until, you know, 10, 20 years from now when they do research on all these kiddos when they're adults, but I do think when we look at their traditional box of what school teaches, right, when we're looking at math, and we're looking at reading, we're seeing that we're just not where we want to be yet, so we need to keep these supports in there. So, thankfully, this budget still has all of those supports in there, and for really solid co-teaching models, which as you know, we've talked about it, you know, year after year, is really about having students in the least restrictive environment, making sure that all of our kids can be, you know, talked together, and having, you know, the ability to have these really inclusive classrooms. Okay. So, programmatic and curriculum, so in this budget, we're investing in an ESL curriculum. Again, we had an ESL TFM. They said, "By the way, you need to have a curriculum," and we said, "Okay," and so now we need to purchase that and have that. We continue to increase in our ELL population, so that's in this budget. In this budget is PD and adoption of the UFLY phonics curriculum and supplement, and a supplemental writing program. You'll hear a little bit more about the UFLY in a little bit. Thankfully, that is mostly free, so we like that one a lot. And then lastly, in curriculum, we have PD on Tier One instructional and best practices. You're going to hear all about that in the future when you, when you hear about next year's plan for PD. Other, so this year, we need to restart our leasing cycle for buses. Last year, we got a reprieve from that. That was kind of one of the only things that saved the budget last year, but we have to get back on track with lease-to-buy so many buses per year, otherwise, we're going to end up with old buses that are breaking down, so that's in this year's budget. Support is increased cost to our out-of-district tuition, transportation, and staffing, so even though we had to ask for this extra supplement for this year, we built the budget based on what we know we need for next year. Could still have unanticipated costs, things that we didn't see coming, but at least it's built in for next year. And then lastly, there's an asterisk because I don't know what this would mean, but funding to support any strategic initiatives coming out of the new strategic plan. That could be anything from research and reports that we need to do or actual actions that we need to take next year, so that's, we're still a little, a little too early to know what that would mean. Okay, so this is the, the slide that no one likes talking about because there are real faces with a lot of these bullet points, but we will have staffing reductions based on enrollment and based on rescheduling. I do feel that we did a really good job about really trying to find a place for everyone who is, you know, currently with us, who we know we have in the schedule, but what that will mean here at BMS, and all of the people at BMS have already been told this plan, so it's not like a shock, you know, coming out of BORN TV. Christine and her team have done a really good job, I, I think, of really talking with people and talking about their concerns, but at BMS, we are going from eight homerooms to six homerooms in both the 6th grade and the 7th grade, and that's right on track of what we did at BES and BIS because there are less children living in BORN. It's not that they're not choosing to come to BORN Public Schools, it's just a lot less, and so it's that kind of right, rightsizing. So, with that, we're able to make those reductions in those two grades. 8th grade still has a large number, so we're keeping 8th grade as it is, but you can expect that maybe next year, you might see that reduction roll up if we don't have, you know, a lot of school choice or for that grade level specifically to increase it. We're scheduling to utilize licensed staff differently, and what that means is that we have some retirements in, say, one subject that is very similar to another subject, and we're able to do the curriculum together. So, again, all these folks know this, it's not a surprise, but for example, we have a retirement of a health teacher. We still have two really wonderful health and PE teachers that are over at the middle school, and we really only need two people to cover both health and PE. So, again, students will still have health, they'll still have PE, we just don't need three people to cover, and through attrition, it's not like someone's losing their job. So, these are the ways we're able to do this. And the same thing is happening in the technology STEAM world, so in both BIS and BMS, we have one of two people in either technology or STEAM that's retiring or leaving the district, and then we're combining those and rewriting curriculum, because STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, and so the T is kind of in there already, but we're going to make sure that kids get, still get coding as much as they were, especially at the middle school, and also have all of those engineering standards that'll either be covered in our science classes or already being covered in there, and digital literacy will also be kind of parsed out to like maybe library media. It'll all go to the appropriate places, but the fact is, we're pretty confident we can still cover, and kids will get just as much of the content. So, when I say it's programmatic, we're not cutting programs, we're just kind of resequencing them. Does that make sense? That's probably the biggest takeaway, I want to make sure people understand, there's no cuts to programs. And then the last one, we're, we're looking, you know, with a very fine-tooth comb at reduction of professional services, like JPGR, that's our consultant who helps with press releases and other things. We, we just feel that if we're cutting, we need to look at that very seriously, either cut it down or cut it completely, and other services like that, so there's a lot of little cuts that are in there too. The last thing, every year, we streamline and try to reduce our digital subscription either cut it down or cut it completely, and other services like that. So there's a lot of little cuts that are in there too. The last thing, every year, we streamline and try to reduce our digital subscriptions, and that's based on usage and effectiveness. If we're not using some sort of a fancy online tool, we're not going to pay for that subscription again. Or we look at new ones that maybe do just as good of a job, but might, you know, be less cost. I'll pause there for a second, there's just a couple more slides. Okay. So this is the kind of, okay, what does this mean in numbers? So if we had a completely level serviced budget, as in everyone who was with us, this year will be with us, next year, all the positions, all the scheduling, everything the same, it would be approximately $800,000 more. So we went in with this whole plan and we were able to cut that down. We were trending at like a 7% over before. And so thankfully, we're able to make some of these changes and really right-size and still keep everything for kids. When I look excited about the fact they were able to keep all these things, I am, because we didn't know if we'd be able to make it. But I'm really proud of this team for what they did. In numbers, the number of full-time positions and part-time positions, so full-time positions, if you, if you think of it on paper, it's nine positions that are being cut, but it's actually a net of seven, because we have some reallocations. So it's seven actual positions being cut out of the budget that are full-time positions. Like I said, some are reallocating and morphing into each other and other stuff, but it's seven actual positions. And then part-time positions, we are also reducing lunch monitors, but only by half in both of the two elementary schools. We want to make sure that they still have that ability while they look at all their scheduling. Because we think that we can schedule, you know, if, if we schedule things right, we can also utilize different staff members during those time periods. A lot of forethought has to go into it to make all the little Jenga pieces work, right? So with that said, our draft budget numbers, current ask is 27,772,498. Would that be third grade, that would have taught me how to read that? And it's currently at a 4.2% higher than this year. We are going to actively work to get it to 4%. We know that's the placeholder that the town has put in. I hope we can get there, I'm confident that I think we can get really, really close, but right now, we're at 4.2.
That's pretty close.
Yeah. And then we have our timeline. Over here is the link to the budget timelines that we looked at in the past, so you can see everything here, how we work our whole budget. This was presented a while ago. And then this is what it looks like now. So refinement of our draft budget, full budget hearing and vote on the budget, and that was tentatively scheduled for March 5th, and I believe that we might have a discussion about that in a few minutes to maybe make it a different date. And then presentation to FinCom, it's FinCom, Board of Select, it's one or the other, and I believe right now, we're looking at a different date anyways there. And then the town budget hearing, that, again, that might get collapsed into this one. In April, we refine even more and create spend-down plans for the different grants that are going to be, you know, expiring at the end of that year. And then lastly, it's all said and done on May 5th at Annual Special Town Meeting, where we also see all of our capital, which is a big part of our budget as well, we have already heard about all the capital. So, at this point, I don't think I have a slide that says questions, but please ask away. And do know that as of right now, we have a little more work to do, but this is the bulk of what you will hear at our budget hearing. With, of course, a little more detail for what that looks like in each school, and the pie charts, and all that good stuff.
Can I ask, like, there probably isn't, but was there a significant change in the amount of students in each class going through the program in the middle school with the cut and the, where it's changing?
We don't think there'll be a significant change going into next year. Yeah. I think that what we saw this year were much smaller classes.
Yeah.
And we wanted that, because we really wanted to have that individualized attention. Again, we just haven't gotten through it yet, right? So that was kind of intentional, to keep that steady for this year. But going into next year, we feel the class sizes are appropriate. I'm looking over at Christine, but would you agree with that?
Yes, I think we're trending at about 18 students per homeroom next year. Right now, we're trending at about 13 to 14.
Those are still really good numbers.
Yeah.
And there's schools that are like 20-something, 23, 24, so that's awesome.
We wouldn't, you know, be going into 30s or anything like that, that'd be crazy.
Oh, that's awesome. That's great.
Great question, though, because that would be something a parent would ask, what would this mean, you're cutting two homerooms?
Will there be a change to the team structure?
A little bit, good question. So we really wanted to keep the team structure intact, we like how, you know, kids are able to know four teachers and be known by four teachers, how there's, you know, guidance counselors attached, and it, it just is so good for that middle school model. The difference is that there'll be one sixth grade team of four, there'll be one seventh grade team of four, and then there'll be a team of four individuals who are teaching, you know, those four subjects, math, science, social studies, ELA, that teach both sixth grade and seventh grade.
Oh, gotcha.
So there'll, there'll be two for a sixth grade, two sixth grade homerooms, two seventh grade homerooms. So all the teachers will be the same, they'll know all those kids. It's not that the kids will ever be mixed together, it's just that those teachers are, are going to be teaching both sixth and seventh grade of their subjects, so sixth and seventh grade math, sixth and seventh grade science.
Okay.
So that's how we'll achieve this. And I think it was a stroke of brilliance, I really want to hand it over to that team over there, you know, Christine and Jessie and Dave, they really, there was a lot of months.
There's been a lot of planning, I will say, but I think our staff also has been incredibly used, because I really want to commend the staff in the middle school, because we've had, you know, change is hard, I think, and they've been just incredibly receptive and open to conversations about change and what that will look like, and coming back and asking questions, we'll explain that again, and, and, you know, I think, can you help envision that team? And I think there's people that are really, have shown some excitement for the idea of teaching two grade levels, and so I'm just really honored to work with them, they've been very open to some change.
That's good. Great question, yeah. And this will all be, you know, explained to parents, all this, but the point I'm trying to make is, I, I think that the middle school has done a great job of having some discussion about it, working through it together. And the scheduling committee still has work to do around like the bells and the this and the that, but at least the whole structure is there now with the staffing, so.
I think, Carrie, just, I think the thing that will change the least is the student experience. Because although it will be different for a teacher that's teaching maybe two math sections of sixth and two math sections of seventh as a student, you're still going to have your four teachers and your specials, and your day is going to roll out very similarly, and our curriculum is not.
That's good.
Yeah.
From a parent's standpoint, I think it's going to be very similar.
Yeah. And that was the goal, and so I also want to echo, I really want to thank our teachers for knowing that the goal was to keep the students at the center of it.
That's so good.
Great. Any other questions regarding budget? I do want to say, this already went to Budget Facility Sub, and I believe someone could be there for that, right? Who was on Budget Facility Sub? Yes, thank you, Ken. At a different meeting. So, so a little time. So I don't know if you want a chance to talk about it now or during the report.
Sure.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, please.
Just as being a teacher at the middle school, we can't say enough about the way Christine has led us through this entire process, which has been amazing through the entire thing, extremely professional, and really cares about her teachers and takes great, great pride in her work and is proud of her.
So that's our budget preview.
Yeah, great. So we had briefly talked, Carrie and I were talking about, that the budget needs to be presented at the town meeting and, you know, at the beginning of February, I'm sorry, the beginning of March, or the, or the 18th of March, and it would be nice to have it done as soon as possible, so we can kind of move along with this. However, the, that would be March 3rd, and our meeting is not until March 5th, like our regular school committee meetings, and we wouldn't be able to vote in time. So if it's okay with the committee, the day that we have our workshop, the 26th, we'll do the workshop for just 30 minutes less, and then have the budget hearing, which won't even take 34 minutes probably.
Right.
And then that way.
Because we've heard a lot of it.
Right, and that way, then we can vote, and then move that along, and it can be presented at the town meeting on March 3rd. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, that's fine. Second.
No, second is, it's, no.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so what I'd like to do is take a little out of order, please.
Yes.
And.
We'll do competency determination and the DECA field trip, and we can move the UFLY presentation with your permission to the end, so we can let some of these folks.
Yes, absolutely. Anyone that is here for a vote, let's do those first.
Got it. Alright, so let's hear about competency determination.
So that's Lisa Maguire.
Alright. I'd like to welcome Lisa Maguire and Jessica Collins.
Hello.
Hello.
So we're here to present our proposal for competency determination. As you know, the November election did away with MCAS, and we needed to come up with an alternative measure for competency. So after consulting the guidance that was released from DESI, really collaborating with other local districts and principals, superintendents across Massachusetts, looking at plans and that collaboration, we have two means to graduation. So our students will have to earn their credits in accordance with MAS Core, which has not changed at all, so students are required to earn the 24 credits. And then in lieu of the three MCAS tests, we are proposing that students must pass English I and English II, which would be that ELA competency determination, Algebra I and Geometry, which would be the math determination, and then either Biology, Chemistry, or Physics, which would fulfill the Science, Technology, Engineering competency determination. So with those five classes and their, their full slate of credits, they would be able to graduate from Born High School. This is a one-year proposed, this is a proposal for the class of 2025. We feel that DESI may release further guidance as we move through this year and see how this works with districts, and we want to make sure that we are attentive to that. But it, we believe that a very similar proposal may come forward in the spring for, for next year and following.
So this one must be voted on? I don't know if there are questions?
Yeah, questions, I have a question. So, so basically, just in my brain, so every student takes Geometry and Algebra?
Yes.
And those the only two that are required to graduate to take?
Those are the two subject areas, the standards that are tested on the form of math MCAS exam. So those are the 10th grade competency, the two math classes that, that they took for that.
Okay.
So at that point, it branches off, there's still a four-year math requirement.
Okay.
So students have to continue taking math to graduate, but that may branch out pre-calculus, calculus, statistics, but the Algebra I and the Geometry are the constant for the competency determination.
So those two, they would have, because you could earn, in other words, you could earn your credits with like gym and art and things like that?
So if I may.
Yeah, no.
I think, so there's two separate things that have to happen in order to graduate. You have to earn your competency, and then you have to meet the school's graduation requirements. So.
And we're developing that.
You got it. So previously, competency was the MCAS exams.
Yeah.
And those, there were three exams at the high school, English, math, and the science exam.
Yeah.
And then you also had all of your graduation requirements, you had to do both those things.
Yeah.
So MCAS is gone, we had to replace that with something. So the logic here is that if the students are passing the classes that were the classes that were feeding to the success on the MCAS exam, let's acknowledge their competency when they complete and pass those particular classes. So there are five of those. The two foundational math classes in high school, the two foundational English classes in high school, and then either Biology, Chemistry, or Physics, because those are the options on the MCAS exam.
Okay.
Right? So if you can check the box on each of those five classes, you've met your competency, which is what you would have done by passing MCAS. The next thing to do is to meet all of our Born High School graduation requirements, which also happened to mirror MAS Core.
Yeah, which is those credits, the 24 credits.
As you, if you, you got it, and if you scroll down, you can see them all listed there. So every student at Born High School is, in the class of 2025, is expected to meet all of these requirements for graduation and have passed English I, English II, Algebra, Geometry, and one of those three sciences. And just to echo what Dr. Maguire said, this is for the class of 2025, we were, we were...
You have to do something.
You got it. Exactly.
Exactly, we've got to do something.
Right, so the vote happened, and we had to develop something, and the DESI kind of put everything back on local jurisdictions to make decisions. So we had the opportunity to talk to lots of schools across the Cape and Islands, through my assistant superintendent, and we were able to see what many schools were thinking, and this is in line with what you're seeing, in particular, if you're following the news, about what school committees are approving. We will be back to you likely before the end of this year with a decision about what we would do for, for the succeeding classes, right? But we didn't want to lock anything in succeeding, because we think there might be more guidance coming from DESI.
Yeah.
So let's do this for our students who are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's do this for our students who are.
So do something for this year, make sure.
Kind of caught in this crosshair right now, and then bring to you a more detailed plan for the students succeeding this class, and the plan might be exactly this. We're just kind of waiting to see what the guidance is from DESI. But this will help our students in the class of 2025.
Can I ask one more question? When it comes to like students, and one of the, one of the things about the MCAS that I personally kind of was on the fence about, you know, is we have students that don't have the, what's the right word, like, the actual ability to pass it, because they don't take certain classes, but they go to school, right? You know, like the, you know, the special ed, you know, certain, right? So is that going to be an issue for students who are enrolled here, who are in special ed programs, but they don't have the capacity to pass Algebra I or Geometry? Are they still going to, do you know what I'm trying to say? Do you know what I'm, am I saying it right? I just don't really.
Sure. So I'll jump in, if that's okay. So the, the competency still does mean they have to meet the curriculum standards.
Yeah.
So IEP teams meet annually to review, and there is a flow chart and document that we have to go through to determine whether, in the, in the past, whether an alternative portfolio was done in order to show competency at their own skill level. So while we won't be having portfolios, so to speak, we are envisioning that by successfully, you know, that's the same standard, they have to meet the curriculum, there are going to be some students that will not, but we will be having those discussions, and those are likely students who will be continuing with us through age 22.
Okay. Because that's one of the things, I think that there are students that, you know, they should get their high school diploma, do you know what I mean? And so, okay.
So we are still waiting on guidance as far as, even if they continue with us through age 22, if, if they've met the competency in that area, are they deferring diploma? Like, there's still a lot of questions regarding that.
Because you get a certificate of completion of high school.
Correct.
So it'd be nice if students in that category can actually get the diploma. So that's why I was curious if that was something they were doing. Alright, good. I'm done, sorry.
In addition, in the class of 2025, there are, there are some students who have not passed, or had not up until this point, passed all three exams.
Yeah.
And so with this change, we have students who would not before November have gotten a diploma, who are now eligible.
That's awesome.
Based on this competency determination.
That's great, that's good, that's really good.
Because they've passed those five classes and the credits in our MAS Core.
This requires a vote. Any other questions?
I move to approve the competency determination for the class of 2025.
Second round. Okay, we'll do a poll vote. Zoe, you get to vote on this as well.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Maguire, Jessie Collins, Kimaya Nudzal, who will help with the discussion Thank you to Dr. McGuire, Jesse Collins, Kimaya Nudal, who will help in the discussion as well, Kate Hartley, Chris Donio.
Kimaya Nudal should come here and get recognized, because she's involved in every...
Yeah. You're in there all the time, don't you?
Yes. So thank you, Kimaya Nudal.
We'll pass that along. Counselor extraordinary. Great work. Thank you.
So while we still have Dr. McGuire up at the podium, I believe Dr. McGuire is going to present a field trip.
Yes, we are so thrilled to have a DECA students continuing on to the State Career Development Conference and Competition. So at the end of this month, right into March 1st, they'll be in Boston Seaport. So they're staying at the Westin Boston Seaport District Hotel, right across from the Boston Convention and Expo Center, where the, most of the competition is held, the day events of the competition. And so they'll be there for the statewide event. We have, next slide, 23 students attending, and you can see here that they are just participating in a wealth of different competitive opportunities here, aligned with their interests and their skills in DECA. So they'll be competing in these events at the conference. So logistically, students will leave on Thursday morning, the 27th. They'll return on Saturday afternoon. There'll be three to four students in a room. Our chaperones and advisors are two to a room. Meals, all the meals at the conference are included, except for Thursday lunch. They typically do a BHS DECA lunch together, sometimes Faneuil Hall or the Prudential, so they have a nice bonding experience there. All of our students have been cleared for travel with our nurse, and they are actively engaged in fundraising to help offset and defer the costs, including community sponsorships. They had Chaka Pocket Canal Cup this week, Spirit Item Sales, so they're hard at work to make those costs as low as possible. The next few slides detail their schedule, so you can see they keep them quite busy and engaged in the DECA world, through, right through from the time that they get there through the end of the day. Curfew is strictly enforced. Our chaperones have bed checks each night. They're on the same floors as our students and available there. And they have advisors and teachers who are supporting the overnight security and daytime security through the event. So there are shifts that advisors will take to make sure that everybody's where they need to be and progressing through the, through the days and through their activities. Once that is completed, we'll find out the number of slots that we earn through their results to the International Competition, which is in Orlando in April. We currently have seven spots that students have earned through volunteerism, fundraising, community outreach, school outreach. So you're able to earn so many spots based on the activities that your group is engaged in through the year, and then the rest of your spots are based on who moves forward competitively. They have to place in their events to be invited to the, to the next step. So that is in Orlando at the end of April. And there are, we have the hotel that we would be staying at, is the Rosen Plaza and the Orange County Convention Center. This is a really large event, comparatively speaking, to the one in Hyannis and then in Boston. You see by the numbers. This is an opportunity for them to really see DECA around the world and network and really see their peers in action. We've started pricing out flights from Providence and Boston to get a budget together. We know the hotel, the meals, the registration, and the activities, so we're looking at about $800 per student prior to any fundraising. Again, the schedule here is really highly organized, whether your group is competing, has social time. Those activities are highly monitored and structured by DECA, so that your, your team is getting the most out of the experience. This isn't just a place to compete, this is also a leadership development conference. So to be able to interact with, with others, to network, to look at some of the exhibits and the displays of what's happening, and then each student receives that evidence, that student transcript, evidence of student learning, against our national standards of, you know, all of the items that they have had, all of the standards and skills from competing and participating in DECA. There's a very strict dress code as part of the DECA competition, so it's really all facets of how you present yourself, how you act with your peers, how you act in social situations, as well as that professional, you know, presentation and the research that kids are doing. Kids are engaged in their, you know, 10, 20-page papers that they're finishing up now to present after vacation in February, and working really hard on the materials that will move forward in Massachusetts and then in Florida. We have lots of sponsors already. There's a ton of energy around DECA. The kids are working really hard to earn those sponsorships and defray costs, and we've developed a nice, a nice way for them to apply that to the costs of their competition, as well as build the budget for DECA as a whole.
I have a question.
Sure.
Where would you find the information if you wanted to sponsor the kids?
Yeah, I know that. Um... That's a Maurice, Maurice, Ms. Maurice question. Okay. We can...
The students. Yeah. Okay, we could talk to, yeah.
Twenty-three moving on are very actively fundraising right now and reaching out to sponsors, but all of the students, so there's a portion that will go to DECA and a portion that they can apply to a project of their choice or a, or a trip. So there's that dual incentive to build the program, build kind of the coffers of the newer program, as well as defray the cost of their own participation.
If somebody wanted to, to help out, they could just call the school and get the information?
Absolutely. We'd be happy to put them in touch. And then you're going to pool that money and it gets divided in visually.
So this is up for both?
Yep, a vote to approve both, the DECA state and national field trips.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, Zoe would vote on this one as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone's in favor?
Right. All right. All right. Thank you so much. How they, how they...
Oh, I know. And then we'll bring them all in. Okay.
But I'd like to do the calendar of events, and then there's a few more. I'll take them a little out of order, hope that's okay.
Sure.
So if we could have any principals that are here to do past and current events, and then we'll get you guys out of here. Whoever wants to be first is fine. I want to, while they're coming up, I want to say today is School Counselor Day, and I'm sure you'll hear about that. We have 12 exceptional adjustment and/or guidance counselors. We value all of them. They bring us so much, so much value, so we want to thank them personally for all the work that they do from the heart.
That's why they had pizza, right, at the high school?
I don't know, but they are amazing. We already heard the name of at least one of them tonight.
Then I talked to two of them. I didn't even say anything. We did have them lunch today, yes. Yes. All week? All week.
Today's the National...
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That's awesome. She wouldn't have slept tonight if she didn't. I didn't even ask why they were eating pizza.
Go ahead, Dr. McGuire.
Oh, my gosh. So Canal Cup was absolutely thrilling on Saturday with four overtime periods, and ultimately got to bring the cup back home for the second year with a two-to-one win. So congratulations to the team. Yesterday, we held our first poetry aloud competition, and we are sending Natalie Klubine to the regional competition in March in Hyannis. She will have to memorize and recite three poems for the chance to compete at the state and national levels. This is the first time we've held this here at Bourne, but we're really excited to start that, the tradition of competing and sending someone forward. We have such amazing students who can perform, memorize, recite, and we should really just be a part of that, I think that will excel. So good luck to Natalie. We're really excited about that, it's in early March. On Thursday, the 27th, at 6:30, the METG Public Performance of Emma will take place. So we're thrilled to have Bourne represented in the, in the Drama Festival and to put forward their piece. And then, as you're aware, our DECA students will return to competition at the end of the month on 27th and 28th. And then we can't wait to hear how our Woods Hole Science Trip is going. The kids left this morning, and they'll be back Friday at 5 o'clock, and we will report out on that, but they're there as we speak.
Such a great statement.
Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome.
All right, good evening. I learned all about Frozen, but I would be remiss if I didn't start by congratulating our students and Rebecca Salgado, the director, and the cast and the crew of Frozen. It was, if you saw it, really fantastic. I mean, I have to say, I, I feel like I say this every year, but I play a lot of shows locally, different high schools, and our middle school show measures up every time our students are professional, and their product is just wonderful, and we're so proud of them. So congratulations to them. Quarter to Report Cards were released in Power School on Friday, and we sent home paper copies yesterday. We are really looking forward to celebrating our students' academic achievements with our honor roll and B2B celebration after February vacation. Today, we celebrated National Read Aloud Day. Students were reading aloud and did various classes, including Spanish. So you can look in this week's more for some really cute pictures of kids reading Spanish version of some really common children's books. They also read aloud to one another in SRS, so it was great. Last week, all of our sixth-grade students attended a theater field trip at the Lyric Stage in Boston, where they experienced couriers onstage and behind stage, and then they enjoyed the performance. This field trip was part of our college and career readiness work at BMS through the grant that we received. Also connected to this college and career readiness program, next Wednesday, the 12th, our seventh-grade students will have an opportunity to meet with our BHS junior interns and learn about the range of internships happening at BHS. This preliminary event, where they get to kind of hear about the internships and meet the students, the students are actually going to join them for lunch, which I think will be fun. And then that's going to lead to a more intentional partnership between our seventh graders and the interns later in the year. And our college and career readiness team has been working on that, but also with the very invested help of Mrs. Strode. So thank you to that whole group. Our eighth grade has officially kicked off the Civic Action Project, and they interviewed a number of members of our community last week, so thank you to anybody who participated. They were super professional, they did a wonderful job, and they really started to share and gather feedback about issues that are important to them and important to us to start their kind of brainstorming and work. Tomorrow, hopefully, fingers crossed with the weather, we have our bingo night, which is a really fun event with amazing prizes, and it's a fundraiser for our sixth-grade Nature's Classroom Trip. We have Mrs. King calling the bingo numbers, and she's always wonderful. And any BMS students who come will receive a raffle ticket to be principal for the day, so we hope to see all of them there. I had quite a few eighth-grade girls telling me how they would get things done if they got to be principal. So that is very exciting. And next week, we have about 15 band students joining 100 band student musicians from across Cape Cod at the Junior District Band Workshop. So thank you to Mrs. McKenzie for organizing this. We're really proud of our students who are attending, and we know they're going to represent us well. And finally, next week, we are looking forward to officially celebrating Kindness Month with our Kindness Week. We have learning activities, Acts of Kindness, and of course, a Kindness Spirit Week. Our MTSS team of adults and also our student council have both been very involved in helping to plan for next week. So I think it's going to be a really fun week leading right up to vacation. Thanks so much.
Mrs. Waring, what is the, what's the theme for the Civic Action Project?
It's a little bit less themed, I think, than it's been, like, you've experienced in the past, but it's really about civic engagement. The students are learning how they can, what they would need to do in order to be more civically engaged if they want to impart change. So this first part was that they're kind of exploring topics that are of interest to them that highly impact the community, and then they're also, we're hearing from us about things that impact, you know, our very local community, from school community to Bourne community, and then community at large. So I don't want to speak for anyone else that was interviewed, but I've received questions, everything from like social media and phone use to like cost of housing. And so I think it's really interesting what they're interested in, too.
Wow. Yeah, that's awesome.
One of the things that we have in the Civic Action Project, as many of you know, has been such a real hallmark project for the eighth grade. The state also added an eighth-grade Civics MCAS, which has performance tasks associated with it. So our teachers have done a really nice job of trying to balance both of those things, so that the Civic Action Project is still very engaged and meaningful for the students. And I think we really already saw, they all came and dressed up, they were super prepared, learning some of the, you know, important skills that that brings. But then they're also bringing it down a level just a little bit, so that they can dedicate some more class time to preparing for the Civic MCAS and making sure that they're doing what's required there as well. So.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was phenomenal. I met with three students. They met with me. They were interviewing me, just so poised, asking questions like, what is the biggest issue that you see in the community, in your role, you know, why do you think that's important? And then, is there any work happening that is helping to affect that issue? I told them all about strategic planning and all of many things, and they were like, wow, I didn't know that was actually happening all the time. So, yeah, it was just fantastic.
All right.
Wow, that's awesome.
And I feel every time I go up here, I am really excited about something new that I've experienced here in Bourne, and I have to say to Christine, we had, I would say a sneak preview, is what you would have called it, a Frozen Junior, that came to BIS, and we had the entire school in the gym for the production. And then afterwards, the kids stayed, they took a picture with the entire school, and then also kind of, you know, high-fived and shook hands, and they were definitely like Broadway.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And even forgetting the name of the horse.
Oh, Spence.
Thank you.
Well, another student named, I'm a real Frozen fan, he's in here.
And I have twins that actually played Elson Anna when they were little, you know, when they were young. But one of the students wanted a high five from the reindeer and was very creative and lifted up their paw, and it was a high five. So it was really, really cute. We took a lot of pictures and videos, and it was so well-received. And we actually had two teachers that had the middle school sixth graders play the younger Elson Anna, Nicole Tonguey and Katja Johansson.
Yes.
Were the younger Elson Anna for, for the play. So it was really cute when they, when they were there for that. So thank you for that. As Christine said, it is National School Counselor Week, and we kicked it off on Monday. If you stop by BIS, you'll see posters and banners that the kids have been making for the counselors, and then cards for them as well. So we're really trying to celebrate the endless work that they do for our students. Today, being National Read Aloud Day, Mary Weatherby set up a mystery reader. We came, who came this morning, we shut the blinds in the office, and she read to the students, and they had to guess who the reader was, and the, and the book for a prize in the library. So they know who it was. Thank you to Aunt Ladner, who came in, from driving the bus, came in. She's a very distinct voice, so she was very easily identified, but she was wonderful when she came in today. Starting last week and finishing this week, we are in our media benchmark time. So the students have been working really, really hard to show all of they've learned in both math and literacy through Galileo. They took their, their writing benchmark today, and they're really persevering through those, and we're really excited to see the growth that they've made since the beginning of the year. Lisa Dex, who's not here tonight, has been pulling the data, and it looks fantastic. So I'm really excited to see that, and then use that data to plan our, you know, our third round of win already, for when we return from February vacation. So super excited for that. With it being National Kindness Month, next week, our school counselors actually have planned a week of events, from Spirit Week to some games for staff. We had done the reindeer in your pocket at Christmas time, and now it's a harp, you actually need to play a little game of rock, paper, scissors to win the harp, and then the staff with the most hearts. So the kids had come up with a game for the teachers to do next week. Actually, this coming Friday is our 101st day of school, and instead of celebrating the 100th day, we're celebrating the 101st day, and we have a Dalmatian theme. So everybody is dressing up as either your favorite Dalmatian character or a Dalmatian. The kids all have white shirts, and they've been decorating them during the day with their spots, so they're going to be all decked out.
That's a dalmatian.
And I've head to toe, Dalmatian, so stay tuned for those pictures. That should be very interesting. We do have, next week, parent student conferences. We have a half-day on Wednesday with conferences, and then we have evening conferences on Thursday. And Lisa Nyland, who is a saint of saints, has been organizing that, and parents have an option of either Zoom or coming in in person. So we have that to look forward to as well. And then we are looking forward to our February vacation. So it's, when you come back, and it's already almost spring. It's crazy.
I know.
But they're already halfway through my first year here in Bourne.
I'm glad we're having fun.
I know.
Thank you. That's exciting.
And Dr. Starkey has the BES reporting.
Presenting for Principal Carbonito, who would like to thank the Coast Guard for volunteering their time this week in grade-two classrooms. They taught a few lessons to the students on basic aerodynamics, about Coast Guard lifesaving equipment, and about communication and sound. The kids were rooting. I sat in on a few of those presentations. Wednesday, the 5th, today, we were fortunate at BES, as across the district, to celebrate our exceptional school adjustment counselors. We are so grateful for the care and compassion they show all of our staff and students every day and how they model the... day, and how they model the B2B and kindness for all. Thursday, the 6th, tomorrow is the 100th day of school for grades one and two, but on Friday, the 7th, our kindergartners will be at the 100th day of school, and there will be celebrations across BES on both of those days. Mark your calendars now, Monday, the 10th, is Shamrock's birthday. You remember Shamrock from her previous presentation, please send dog bones directly to BES, the kids cannot wait to celebrate. Wednesday, the 12th, and Thursday, the 14th, as you heard before, we have parent conferences, both via Zoom and in-person, and those are by sign-up at BES. And as always, parents are welcome to set up appointments anytime outside of parent conferences as well. Friday, the 14th, Valentine's Day, you can also send your hearts over to the school resource officers, it is their appreciation day. And then February vacation is happening, as we know, the 17th and the 21st. Thursday, the 27th, is Book Nook at BES. Thursday, the 27th, is Family Literacy Night, please stay tuned for more details. And Friday, the 28th, is Read Across America Day. Our literacy team is putting together some fun activities for students to participate in throughout the day. And then there is a dental presentation for our grade one students.
Nice.
And that is busy.
Yeah.
It is a busy month, it's a busy month.
Short, but.
I know, but busy.
Pack a lot in.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Did I add that dog bone comment to here? Or was that actually in the? Might have added.
Awesome. Well, we're going to stick with Dr. Starkey, you're on a roll, you're going to hear about Ufly right now.
Why, Ufly, okay. I am Ufly, in lieu of Lisa Dix, who would be giving this presentation, here I am. We're going to skip right to slide four. First are just introduction slides. We gave this presentation yesterday to our curriculum subcommittee, we'll be looking for a vote on this either right after my presentation or at the end of the meeting. The University of Florida Literacy Institute has a phonics program that we are looking to adopt here across the district. As you know, ARC is our reading program, however, ARC has embedded phonics in the program, and it's not explicit phonics instruction, and we are noticing a difference in our students' reading performance. So as a result, we set on a journey to find an appropriate phonics program, and our literacy committee, under the steerage of Lisa Dix, would like us to adopt the internship, Ufly, otherwise known as the University of Florida Literacy Institute Phonics Program. Why? Were there? Okay.
I'm with you.
Great, sorry, I didn't know if you were flying as fast as I am flying. It's a research-based phonics approach. It integrates explicit systematic phonics instruction that builds strong decoding and word recognition skills. It is aligned with the science of reading, which is the philosophy we subscribe to here in Born public schools. It supports our diverse learners with extra attention for our English language learners, and it's a structured and systematic approach, everything from daily lessons to tiered focus monitoring, and you'll hear a little bit about that on slides to follow. One of the more important things that I'd like to point out is this program was selected by our teachers. So our ground users who work with the students, who looked at programs, thought that this is the best program for our students here in Born public schools. And I'd like to just take a minute here to recognize the members of the literacy committee, Lisa Dix, and in particular, Tami Kelly and Danielle McKinnon over at BES, they were instrumental in finding and piloting this program.
That's awesome.
I'm going to keep going, sorry if I'm talking quickly. Ufly would be used for our primary phonics resource. So again, it's our resource that we're using to supplement ARC, so they're getting phonics embedded in ARC. This is discreet explicit instruction sitting adjacent to ARC, to our ARC program. Lessons are designed to build foundational literacy skills. Teachers will use a variety of instructional materials that all come with Ufly. Dr. Joe had indicated to you before that Ufly is by and large a free product right now, so we like to maximize on it. The manuals and some of the professional development are not, and that's where some of the budget funding will help to help us to keep moving with this program. You're going faster than I am, that's a sweat. So grades K and two will use Ufly daily with students. Grades three and five will use Ufly as a tiered mechanism of support for students who are presenting as struggling readers by the time they hit born intermediate school. So parents with students at BES will have information coming home about their reading progress on Ufly materials and our progress monitoring that we use. Students at born intermediate school will only access this if they're struggling readers. Make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move right along. I'll skip the key components for you. Scope and sequence is on slide 14. As I said before, it's a progressive program, the goal is to have all of our students not needing phonics instruction by the time they're moving into born intermediate school, but some students do. This program provides that tiered support for them while building a strong foundation for our kids in K and one and two. I'll move right along. As I said to you before, there's built-in progress monitoring. There are two forms of formative assessment, right, so we're checking daily with the kids, checking for understanding and observation of practice. In addition to that, there's a mechanism for data collection so that we can track its effectiveness, in particular, when we're using it, the kids who need tiered instruction. The progress monitoring is all built right into Ufly, so the teachers don't have to create any additional resources in order to monitor the students. Just going to move on. Professional development, there's three levels of that, training, coaching, and online tools. Our goal here is to always empower our teachers to be training one another. So Lisa Dix and some of our other teachers will go through the process of training, they'll become coaches for their colleagues and peers here in the district, and there is a suite of online tools that are free for use right now. So we're using those, moving right along. The implementation timeline, pending your approval tonight, and its adoption, full implementation will take place right now for all our kids in grades K and two, and then our struggling readers in grades three through five. Winter and spring, we'd also like to start engaging in the PD for the teachers and creating Google reference folders and acquiring as much of this information as we can, in particular, while it's still free of cost. And then by fall of 2025, we'll have absolute full implementation, progress monitoring placed, and data sharing, and we'd like to maybe extend that data sharing out to our parents once our teachers are more comfortable with its use. Next steps, one, two, three, let's go. Pending your adoption, we'll complete the necessary training, purchase any materials we still need, although I have to say we've purchased a number of manuals now. We'll begin to continue implementing Ufly in the classrooms beyond the pilot that we have going on right now. It'll begin to seep its way into win periods where needed, in particular, at BIS, continue to build a library, and amplify the Google Drive of all the materials the teachers need, and set up follow-up meetings to evaluate progress of the program. So those are our next steps. I can take any questions you might have.
Love this.
I love it, I love that you can implement it right away.
Is it like a contract or something that they do for a certain timeframe? Awesome.
No contract right now.
That's great.
Download and print everything.
That's great.
How much is it again?
No.
I'm just kidding. I just wanted you to repeat that for Mr. Geis.
Can I add to that a little bit? From our air meeting yesterday, one of the things that I liked is that if anybody's having an issue, they can reach out on Facebook, and the developer gets right back.
Wow.
Immediate responses, which I thought was really, really helpful for teachers that are trying to implement, learn, understand.
That is so good.
In addition to all of the tools that they have access to through the Facebook, right?
Right. All of the materials that come with the program, they have access to, and then there is quite a following and a user group, so the teachers can follow on Facebook. Don't quote me on this, but I'm imagining if they're on Facebook, they're probably on Instagram with some of those as well, but the actual researchers involved in the program do direct contact folks with questions.
That's awesome.
That's great. Another piece that I thought was really neat about that was because it's, there is no direct training, and because it's coaching style, to have a group like that on Facebook, everybody's kind of in the same boat, so they're learning from each other, which I thought was really a nice piece to this as well, as far as the teachers being able to communicate and see what works for their students, and I thought that was a great piece to this.
That's awesome.
Great.
So, I don't know if you want to move out of order, but we do need a vote.
Yeah, take a vote for this right now.
And you have to approve the Ufly program.
Second. Okay. Zoe, you would vote on this one as well. All those in favor of approving the Ufly phonics program?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay, Ufly approved.
Thank you very much. I've been hopping all night, so I'm going to continue. I'm not going to let the diminished audience deter my chat. No offense to you, Mr. R.
All right, continuing on, Mr. Geis, budget facilities update.
Budget facilities update.
I stole a lot of your thunder, but.
You did. What news do I have? We discussed, I just got the, sorry, the couple different timelines for the brandstand project down at Jacksonfield, so we have a meeting tomorrow where we'll review and ask questions of what each timeline looks at. One of them is a spring installation, and one of them is a fall. We're leaning at this point to the spring, but Dr. Maguire and myself will be in that meeting to ask questions. And BMS Chiller is going out to bid in the next couple of weeks. There's a lot of work to do with the middle school roof as well. It will qualify for this round of the MSBA based off of the years that they changed. It's a 20-year threshold now, before it was 25, so we were concerned we wouldn't get it in for this round, and we couldn't even apply, so we'll be able to apply, so stay tuned for that. We'll be voting on that SOI.
Tonight?
Tonight. And the Board of Select will be voting on that as well. Other than that, it's all budget work.
Do that right now, the vote for the SOI?
Sounds good.
Do you want to explain that a little further, Dr. Joe?
I'm going to let Mr. Geis explain that.
So the vote you're taking is just required by the MSBA, part of their process, the language is very specific, it has to be the exact language that is written there.
I'm going to read it.
And it's just one of the many steps we have to go through to say that we are interested in applying for a project through the MSBA to replace the middle school roof.
Okay. So, I'm going to read it.
There you go.
Get ready. We're involved, having convened an open meeting on February 5th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the town of Born, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 2025 for the Born Middle School located at 70 Waterhouse Road, Born, Massachusetts 02532, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of a school facility system such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. The shingled roof at Born Middle School has a well-documented list of deficiencies resulting in leaks in almost every area of the second floor. These deficiencies are captured in an assessment completed by Gale Associates in March 2020 and a subsequent update in June of the same year, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of the application, the awarding of the grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Born to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
One clarification?
Did I say wrong?
The address is 77 Waterhouse Road.
That is written wrong here. Seventy-seven, do I have to read it again?
No.
I know.
70 Trowbridge of BIS, 75.
Seventy-seven Waterhouse Road, Born, Massachusetts 02532. Okay. Now we need a vote. So we need a vote to, the motion to, what are we?
Scroll down.
Did you say scroll down?
Nope.
Oh.
There you go.
I'm like, I can't, I'm going to be asleep. Was there somebody else I was supposed to read?
It's old-school scrolling.
We'll authorize the superintendent of schools to submit the SOI.
Oh, yeah, okay. We need a vote of the school committee to authorize the superintendent of schools to submit the SOI to MSBA.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so this is budget-related, so you want to vote in this?
Yes.
Carrie? Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Are you watching when he's going to read off? I'll get a break.
So we'll move that forward to the Board of Select.
Yes.
On the 11th, is that right?
Yes.
That's when the next meeting is. And actually, did this come from them, this form, or no, did this come from them?
It came from the template from MSBA.
Okay, so it was addressed, okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Great, and Mr. Geis also has a vote for adult lunches.
Oh.
Let's see if we put them out.
Several votes, sure. We need to increase the adult lunches to $5.50. We just increased them recently, but due to the audit, they were not priced appropriately, so we are required to increase that price to $5.50 per lunch. It's still the best deal in town.
Really is. So moved.
So moved to approve the adult lunch price increase to 550.
Second.
Any questions about that? Okay, all those in favor of approving, of increasing the adult lunch price to 550? Aye. Okay, good.
Great, thank you. All right, technology update, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. Good evening, everyone. So we are continuing to work on improving our security measures across the district of our network security. While the school district network was not affected, the town of Born cybersecurity attack is a good reminder that we are all at risk. These improvements include tightening our anti-vanish protection, enforcing password resets with complexity. Also working with Power School to improve our security posture with our student information system. Power School has assured districts across the country they are reviewing their cybersecurity incident and taking steps to mitigate future risks. As you remember, these, both of these took place, and here next is an accepted timeframe. Born is also looking at ways to secure Power School accounts better, one such example is multi-factor authentication for power admin users. In addition to Power School's security improvements, I'm working with our administrative assistance, admin team, and school nurses to revise our online enrollment forms and returning student forms that are filled out each September. We feel there's a significant amount of redundant data that is asked for, and we think the forms can be better streamlined and consolidated. That's some feedback that we've gotten through the years that I've been here, that especially the reoccurring forms that come out every September, that there's a lot of information, and a lot of that information is entered two or three times in different forms, so we're looking to better use our parents' and caregivers' time.
Thank you.
We're going to pick it up a little bit. We are also piloting some new software with our educators to help them manage and interact with students in their club books and class. This software helps students stay on task and focus on the lessons that are in front of them. And last but not least, we're starting to look at our fleet of copiers. We have some in the ballpark of 24 copiers in the district. Their leases are coming up, and we're going to try to stay competitive for the renewals for the next three years, and that is my technology update.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well done.
Great. All right.
Very well done.
Student services and special education, Mrs. Donohue?
Thank you. So DESI was on site for the week of January 27th. They conducted student file reviews and special education procedure compliance checks. They interviewed staff yesterday and today via Zoom, so that piece is completed. I would specifically like to thank the central office team, the principals, Kate Hartley, Stephanie Burns, and our special education secretaries who did an amazing job in organizing and reorganizing and uploading and helping and supporting throughout the process and the DESI team, so they need to be commended. We will have some things to address, but the team did comment how evident it was that Born truly cares about its students, and we have a lot of positive things to be proud of, and it shows in the way we support our students, so that was a nice, some nice feedback. We'll get the formal findings in about three or four weeks, so we'll take it from there. On different measures, we had a very positive professional development experience where we had a session on augmentative communication. Since this was a case study, it actually, obviously with parent consent, we were highlighting one student, but how that tool could be transferred and tools used to others, so it was really nice. We had a great learning community where the parents were actually participants, as well as this particular student's community providers. So they collaborated with us and were able to help transfer what we were doing into the home and vice versa, so it was great. We still are getting resources from Dr. Ho, who was the presenter, and she's keeping us in the loop and keeping us connected, so it was. it was great. In addition, I participated in the regional McKinney Vento session with our state liaison, Shirley Chan. So the session was for all of Southeast and Cape and Islands. So she's just meeting with us quarterly to review any new guidance and making sure that we are following through with any new procedures that come through. So that was a busy month for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The tiered focus monitoring has been an unbelievable endeavor. It's been a huge lift and Kristen Donohue down there needs a pat on the back.
Or a round of applause.
Yeah. As you know, Kate Hartley, who's obviously not here this evening, but Kate has been tremendous in getting the work prepared for the TFM.
Thank you.
Right, yes, thank you.
We've had more audits this year than anyone can remember. They're huge and they are taxing and they're burdensome, and this team still keeps kids first. So it really is amazing that in a year like this, we're able to still have so much forward movement and work with staff and, you know, really, I'm really proud of our team. They've taken on an incredible, every one of them down this line, an incredible lift. So, yeah.
That's so good, thank you.
I don't want to jinx it and say like, I don't know what other audit we can get, but God, we've done so many.
There's no turn?
It feels like a year. So that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, subcommittees. Curriculum Subcommittee, was there anything additional for Curriculum Subcommittee?
No, we covered everything.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee, we do have a few votes. So Policy Subcommittee, we met the 30th of January and we looked at the Civil Rights Complaint Policy, and this came out of the Food Service Audit, just recently. The district needs to have this policy in place with a link to the procedure for the complaint. So the policy actually hasn't changed, the link is just being added. So that was in the folder for you to look at.
Which letter was that?
This is policy EFE.
Go ahead, thank you.
And the link isn't active yet, in case we needed to change anything. So if you go to the policy, I just closed out of it by accident, let me open that back up. There's a document next to the policy in the folder, and it is what the link would be, and it's basically what we're told we have to have in there.
Are we doing them individually, or do we want to?
Yeah, but were there any questions about that? About policy EFE? I can.
He was adding the link, that was it.
Yeah, so policy EFE has not changed. The only thing that's changing is the, it's called in here Cop, well, it's copy, but it's 2022-1201 Complaint Procedures, and it's just a procedure for someone who wants to file a complaint. Any questions? So we need a motion to approve revised policy EFE.
So moved.
Okay, so Zoe, you can vote on policies. If you want, you don't have to vote.
Second.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of revising the policy EFE? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, policy EFE with its new link, which I will actually link, is moved. Okay, so the next policy we talked about was Student Rights Policy, JI. And again, this was related to the Food Service Audit. It needed to review the Student Rights Policy. We need to add an additional item, item number six, which is just that students have a right to request a modified meal for each of their school meals. New wording has been added to that policy. So we voted at the Subcommittee to send this to full committee for vote. And Jordan had worked with us on this, he had added the line for us. So if you look at JI, you can see the additional, item six. Any questions about that? So we need a motion to revise policy JI.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of revising policy JI? Aye. Opposed? Great. All right, and then we had several policies related to artificial intelligence and academic integrity, and thank you to Chris and anyone who else was involved in working on these, I'm sure you had a.
The tech committee.
Tech committee. Thank you, because these did not exist, so we are going to be leaders in the state of Massachusetts.
We're trying.
With these new artificial intelligence and academic integrity policies. So we have an update to policy IJNDB, and the only change is to include language, including artificial intelligence to the current policy. So we just added those three words just so we could incorporate artificial intelligence. So if you have looked at policy IJDB, that little bit of wording has been added. Any questions on policy IJDB, IJNDB?
No.
And this policy was fairly new to begin with, it was just adopted, approved last May.
Okay, so if there's no questions, then we need a vote again to amend policy IJNDB.
Move to amend IJNDB?
Okay, all those in favor of amending policy IJNDB? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Approved.
Okay, and then the other policy that needed an amendment was, oh wait, these are two new policies.
You're right, still on J, it's IME-E2.
But that says new policy on here, on my form, on my notes.
It shouldn't be a new policy.
Nope, it's old policy. Sorry, there's just one change. So policy IME-E2, and there's only one change, it's on page two, related to academic honesty and plagiarism, related to AI. This is the form currently in the student handbook, it's just updated with the new language. So it's very minor, minor change.
I just had a quick question about this one. Is this, I think it was, if you go up on that, maybe like this, keep going, a little It had to do with a bully, it was a point on the, oh, there it is. I will not send, distribute hateful discriminatory harassing digital. Is that specifically just on school-issued Chromebooks? Is that on personal phones, personal computers?
So this is, I'm sorry, where is it? What poll is it?
That was the second one. It doesn't really.
I am responsible for treating others with respect and dignity, that one?
Yes. I will not send or distribute hateful discriminatory harassing digital.
Through digital media, so this is like digital?
It's just in Chromebooks, right?
It's just the Chromebooks because it's, that's school issue?
So this is, the digital use form is for their Chromebook, is for their Chromebooks. So I, first value at this is this is all around their Chromebooks.
Any other questions? Okay, so then we need a motion to amend policy IME-E2.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of amending policy IME-E2? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent.
It's approved.
Okay. Our last one was a new policy, and this is where we have to say big thank you. Chris and his team, because this is the first in the state of Massachusetts.
Oh, but the first.
I think, I couldn't find any others, could you?
No, ah, no, I guess I didn't, no.
So approved policies, and this is the first in the state. So you get one.
I need to get myself started.
That's right. Yep. It is the new policy IJNDD. Anyone even had to give it its own letters?
We did.
That's how the.
The letters did not exist.
See? It's the second time our Policy Subcommittee viewed it, and then there were some changes made by Chris and his Technology Committee. So there's a section added relating to academic integrity on assessments. The policy is kept very simple, it's not restrictive, it can be changed as AI changes, which happens frequently. Early adopters, no other towns have this. A draft did go out, since it's a brand-new policy, a draft went out to all staff members as well, so that they could view this ahead of the vote. Any questions on this? Groundbreaking new policy?
And I would just add, a lot of this came out of the conference that we attended the day of AI, where Dr. McGuire and myself attended a workshop on AI policymaking.
It's awesome. It's great.
It's not going anywhere, that's for sure.
No, no.
Okay. If there's no further questions, then we need a vote to approve new policy IJNDD.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving policy IJNDD? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Okay, that's it, oh, well, actually, yes.
Could you stand up, please?
We did also talk about advertising policy KHAA. We're still working on this policy at future Policy Subcommittee meetings, talking about how, which flyer should be approved and where they'll be housed, so that they're not attached to every school. It's news letter. So we're working through that and we'll have more information at an upcoming meeting. So for Policy Subcommittee, Budget and Facilities, is there anything additional?
No, I just want to commend Jordan on his hard work on the budget. We all went through it pretty much line by line.
Yes, definitely.
At our meeting, so, thank you.
It's a huge undertaking. Thank you, along with all the audits. All the prize audits, so. Give Jordan a big round of applause.
You get applause, you get applause.
All right. C-PAC? Who'd you go?
Yeah, so nothing really new to report. Some of the events coming forward is we are working with Best Buddies, they'll be doing, we have a chapter at the elementary school and at the high school, so they're gonna be coming to do a presentation to see if we can have a Best Buddies chapter in each school. So CPAC is working on that. We are working on a session for likely May where we focus on augmentative and assistive communication devices and on our Better in Speech and Hearing Month. And we are partnering, CPAC is going to be partnering with us to help celebrate World Down Syndrome Day, which is honored through Odd Socks, if you remember from last year. So we're putting together some activities to help promote that as well.
The Collaborative, we don't have a report because Maureen is out of town this evening. Strategic Planning Steering Committee.
Let me take that. We had our third meeting out of five total. We have been working towards finalizing the mission statement, core values. We worked on developing our initiatives for our four focus areas that we have, and our next step is working on prioritizing the initiatives, which is not being collected by every single committee member, and they will present to us the next meeting, how we prioritize going forward.
All right, thanks. District DEIB.
I'm presenting that on behalf of Jessie Clements, who was here earlier. Jessie is working with the committee this year. She'd like to acknowledge all the librarians across the district who are recognizing Black History Month with displays and reading activities for our students, and she'd like you all to know that there are some meetings coming up between members of the DEIB Committee and student groups in each school, in the interest of the students putting together a DEIB Celebration Week that they have been asking for, for the month of April. Stay tuned.
Okay, thank you. Technology Committee, was there anything additional?
Just a couple of things. I actually wanted to, if we could just go back quickly to that form IMEE2 to your question. So that is actually the acceptable to use policy for the network. So that would, it's not just Chromebooks, I just want to just go back and correct myself, I had said Chromebooks. It's actually anything, when they're in school, on our network, using our devices. It doesn't necessarily have to be a Chromebook, it could be a computer, it could be a tablet, it could be anything on our network.
Thank you. Is there any for phones or?
Yeah. Because they're on the network.
They're on the network, right.
If they're on the network, so I think at some point, there's a line, right, in which it's harassing, you know, and that's a lot for me to decide, that's more at the building level, the principals with harassing and bullying and where those lines fall, and there are certainly case studies and court cases out there around that, and I can certainly speak some more to it at another meeting, but yes, there are some fine lines there. But this policy speaks directly to our network in the district. But as far as, that really doesn't get in too much around personal devices, but of course bullying and sending out, you know, harassing messages, depending on what it is and the, how it presents, it could potentially, I don't know if Dr. Stuckey wants to add a little more to that.
Right, so I don't want to get in the weeds around, you know, what would be constituted bullying and harassment. I think for the purposes of this policy, it's just to acknowledge that the policy covers everything that happens on the district network.
Yeah.
Right, so if you're on the dis, you are responsible, and you're a responsible digital citizen when you are on the district network, and that's what this policy tries to capture. And the policy becomes a tool of working with the students so that they understand their private communications are their private communications, but when you're at work, school, and you're on the school network, you're accountable for your behavior.
Thank you.
You said it so much better. Thank you. As far as the tech committee meeting, we did meet on January 14th. We had some conversations around our digital software that we're using and little issues that come up across different grade levels. We had a lot of conversation around the AI policy, and we actually had a presentation from a Google curriculum specialist that zoomed in, and he gave us some updates on the latest software and the latest version that's coming out of Google Classroom. So our next meeting is Thursday, February 27th at 3:45.
Thank you. Did the Wellness Advisor Committee meet?
We did. We met last Thursday. It was our first meeting with our coach from the John Stocker Institute. It was a long meeting, solid hour and a half. We went through the goals for the program that we're in, which ultimately will be to present to the School Committee a revised wellness policy. We used the tools that the coach guided us to, to review each section of the wellness policy, and now we need to break that up into groups, and each group's gonna tackle a whole different section based off of the regulations and laws that are applicable. So our target date to get that done is towards the spring. We will meet with the coach again after we send it to her, and she will give us some more feedback. That's probably pushing for March, to get it to the School Committee before the end of the school year.
Thank you. Any additional Subcommittee or Advisor updates?
We have thoroughly committed.
Okay, I do see we did miss a vote, well, we didn't miss it, but it's.
There's a couple, yeah.
There are a few votes still. We have a vote to accept early college grant, which we need to talk about.
I think we talked about it a little bit at last meeting, but just as a refresher, we're building a connection between Born High School and Mass Maritime Academy for an early college program. This grant covers, largely covers the planning phases of that, so it would cover six educators, three from Born High School and three from Mass Maritime, to engage in some curriculum alignment so that the kids are able to take courses that would be suitable at both locations. So that's largely what this portion of the grant money would be used for.
Okay, so we do need a vote to accept the early college grant with MMA for, in the amount of $50,000.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and so Zoe, you can vote on this. All those in favor of accepting the early college grant with MMA for $50,000? Aye. Opposed? Great, who's gonna oppose that? Thank you. All right, a vote to approve warrants and payroll, but we don't have any.
I have a question about that before we move on.
I have a question about that before we move on. So once the grant is approved, do we know that's it, that's moving? Is that something that can be discussed openly with the public and put out there and?
Absolutely.
There was a press release too.
Okay.
Sure, but we'd be happy to provide an update once the planning is underway at a meeting like this. Dr. McGuire could offer an update and that would be helpful for community members to hear as a promotional item for Born High School.
Yeah, thank you.
And the intent is that this is the planning and then the plans are in place for us to go to the second part of the application to actually get the full designation. So just like Innovation Pathways, there's a planning phase and then there's a, okay, you can do it. We can still do it even if we don't get a second grant, but the point is it'll be officially designated. And that means that these courses that we develop, when Born High School students take the courses, they get full credit at any institution. So it's not just like an AP where an institution might take that credit or they might not. You actually have those credits on your transcript no matter where you go.
That's wonderful.
And I believe we're, we're looking at a few different departments, but the focus is squarely in engineering because they have three different engineering majors there. So we hope that lots will come out of it, but that was, that was the, one of the main focus when we talked about it originally.
Great.
Exciting.
Did you want to add anything?
Dr. McGuire, Ms. Strode, and Ms. Ainucci have started talking about it. We talked about it at, I can't remember what night it was, but there were eighth graders, incoming freshmen, some of them were here, we met in the library.
Program studies.
Yes, that, that one. It was Ms. Strode being part of Innovation Pathways and then Dr. McGuire and Ms. Ainucci correlating that connection, talked about it a little bit as part of the pathways and that upcoming opportunity. So it is, it's open.
Great.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. There are no warrants and payroll to approve due to the issues at the town. But we do have regular session minutes from January 8th.
I move to approve the regular session minutes of January 8th, 2025.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving January, the minutes from January 8th, 2025? Aye. Opposed? Okay, great, minutes approved. Okay, have I missed anything? There were a lot of votes tonight.
A lot of votes.
A lot of stuff.
Okay, any future agenda items, music and arts, student accolades in March? The budget hearing, which we already discussed, we're going to have a very brief school committee meeting for the budget hearing, February 26th. And then we have the superintendent's evaluation in April.
And hopefully the strategic plan.
Yes.
I can't wait to hear about that. But do tune in for the March meeting, March 5th, because we will have serenaded by all of our amazing singers, music in our schools month. It's also Youth Theater Month and Art in Our Schools Month, but we'll get to hear the National Anthem.
Great.
It'll be wonderful.
Nice.
Great. Final questions? Thank you, everyone, it's a long day. Thank you for being here, thanks for participating, thank you to our audience. What a great job. We do need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn? Second.
Okay, we'll call vote to adjourn, okay? Yes. I say yes, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Meeting adjourned, day 28th, thank you. You can shut your power off.